I want to welcome everyone to our first full virtual City of Santa Barbara Planning Commission hearing. Today is Thursday, April 9th, 2020. And at the outset, I would like to ask our staff representative, whether that's Ms. Rydel or another staff member, to please do a verbal roll call in order for all of the other six commissioners to be on the screen, both seeing one another as well as the public viewing the other six. I'm going to momentarily turn off my webcam, Ms. Kokinda, if that works technologically.
Yes, please, you can go ahead and turn your...
Okay, so as I do that, if the other six commissioners would please turn on webcams and audio, and we're going to then have staff call the roll.
Okay, I'm going to hand it over to Allison DeBuss to call the roll.
Thank you. Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Lodge.
Here.
Commissioner Higgins. Commissioner Escobedo. Commissioner Bonderson. Vice Chair Wiskom. And Chair Schwartz.
Thank you so much to everyone. Let me say at the outset, this is a learning process for all of us to use this technology and a new way of conducting our business together and for the public. So I'm going to proceed somewhat slowly, so first everyone can hear me, and to allow all of us to become more comfortable as our learning curve unfolds, because we do not know the time ahead of us, the amount of time ahead of us, when we will be using this virtual mode of conducting Planning Commission business and serving the City of Santa Barbara and the community in this way. What I'm going to do as often as possible is ask either a group of commissioners or all six of the other commissioners to come on the screen. We're disadvantaged in a sense right now, because we do not have the opportunity to be in the same physical location, looking at one another closely, hearing one another, and for the public to see us all in chambers. So I, again, am going to do my level best on an interactive basis to invite you, depending upon the item, to turn on your webcams, remain with audio live, so that we can somewhat simulate what we don't have the opportunity to do at this time. First, I would like to ask Commissioner Reed to turn on his webcam for a moment and audio, because I want to formally welcome Commissioner Reed to the commission. He is our most recent addition. Welcome, Commissioner Reed. And we're so pleased that the council appointed you and are looking forward to you joining this very important decision-making body. Are there any preliminary comments you would like to make, since this is your first full hearing in serving?
Thank you, Chair Schwartz. I'm, yeah, I'm greatly honored to be here. I grew up in Santa Barbara, born and raised here. It's a city that I love sincerely with all my heart. So this is just a lifetime honor to serve on this commission. Thank you.
Excellent. And then I would thank you, Commissioner Reed, one of three new commissioners. If you could please stay with your webcam up. I would then like to invite Commissioners Escobedo and Bonderson to please turn on your webcams and audio, because even though you, we participated together before we needed to go virtual, I still want to acknowledge that the three of you are joining our commission as new commissioners. We have a newly assembled commission this year. I'm so pleased and really inspired that the three of you have joined the Planning Commission. I'll go to you, Commissioner Bonderson. Any preliminary comments you might like to make?
I just want to say that I'm also very pleased to be a part of this current commission. The fact that these particular seven people are joined together is nothing but a special experience in itself. And even though we are far away from each other physically, I think that we will continue to have an opportunity to do great things, and the distance doesn't change that. I think the fact that we're all willing and able to try these experiments to continue working together and giving back to our community to the best of our ability under these circumstances just shows what a strong and committed group we are, and it is an honor to work with this particular group of people in these conditions. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Escobedo, would you like to make any opening remarks?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too am excited to be a part of this very important decision-making body for the city of Santa Barbara, and I am looking forward to getting back to work. And although we're in unprecedented times, it's reassuring to be a part of this commission with my six fellow commissioners, and I'm looking forward to getting back to the business of the city and starting today. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Okay. With that, I'm going to proceed to preliminary matters. So at this point, staff, whoever is going to respond to preliminary matters, Ms. DeBussk, this is item 2A in our agenda on page two of the staff report, for everyone's reference, requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of ex-agenda items.
Thank you, Chair Schwartz. I would like to announce that item three, the stormwater amendments, has been postponed indefinitely, so we will not be hearing that item today. And that concludes the continuances portion of the agenda.
Do we have anything there on 2B, announcements and appeals?
Nothing to announce, no appeals.
Okay. So now to the full commission. This is item 2C on page two of the staff report. It's review, consideration, and action on the following draft Planning Commission minutes and resolutions. And I recognize that Commissioner Reed had not yet joined the Planning Commission in February, so he was not present to participate in this, but we have for our consideration today the draft minutes for our February 13th, 2020 Planning Commission hearing. I'll take those first. Are there any commission comments, revisions, please, Commissioner, Vice Chair Wiskom?
Madam Chair, I move to approve. Are you taking them separately, the resolutions separately?
Yes, I think I'll do that. We have time to do that.
I move to approve the minutes as written. Thank you.
Okay, do we have a second? Very good. Commissioner Escobedo is seconding that motion. Now we go to, I just want to facilitate how we conduct these aspects of our hearing. So there's a first and a second, and then I'm going to open it up for discussion, any discussion on that first and second to approve the February 13th, 2020 meeting minutes. I'm not hearing any need for a discussion. So with that, I'm going to, I think we'll still be able to do a full voice call without Commissioner Reed on the screen, because he wasn't here, so that would be an abstention. But would the other commissioners please turn on your webcams and audio? And then we're going to ask staff to do a voice roll call on the February 13th minutes. Staff, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Higgins.
Aye.
Commissioner Lodge. Commissioner Bonderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Escobedo. And Chair Schwartz.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Wiskom.
Okay, very good. We're going to go to our next item for review and consideration, and that's the Planning Commission Resolution Number 001-20 for 923 Castillo Street. Are there any requests or identification of revisions to that resolution that we have? Okay, with that, why don't everybody turn on their webcams and mics? And it sounds like we're ready for a motion to approve if there are no revisions.
We'll do it, Brett.
I second it.
Was that Commissioner Higgins making the motion?
Yes.
Yes, and then Commissioner, and then Vice Chair Wiskom. All right, and then staff, if you would please do a voice vote on that?
Thank you. Commissioner Bonderson.
Aye, yes.
Commissioner Escobedo. Commissioner Higgins. Sorry, Commissioner Higgins.
Aye, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Higgins.
Commissioner Lodge.
Aye.
Vice Chair Wiskom.
Aye.
Chair Schwartz.
Aye, thank you very much.
And noting for the record that Commissioner Reed is abstaining.
Yes, thank you. Our next item, 2D, are comments from members of the public pertaining to any items not on this agenda. I'd like to pause for a moment here. We have two ways in audio of the public participating or commenting. Of course, that's separate from email communications. Some members of the public already know that they can, and they know how to join us through voice-over IP, but Ms. Ostringer also confirmed for me, and I don't know if Ms. Ostringer would like to come on the screen for a moment, and confirm how the public can participate via smartphone, because I'm not sure that that was clearly understood when the Planning Commission conducted its dry run of a virtual meeting Monday of this week. Would Ms. Ostringer or any other staff member please come on the screen and explain to the public how to use their smartphone if they'd like to comment to us that way?
Chair Schwartz, I apologize, my camera doesn't seem to be working, but it's my understanding that, and Ms. Kokinda, who's the organizer of the meeting and has more extensive knowledge of webinar, they can access it through their smartphone by clicking a link, and they can also, there's the option of calling in on their smartphone using the GoToWebinar link. And if Ms. Kokinda has any other further information on how they can get that, I'll let her speak to that.
And actually, so I also see that Leah Yabara is a, has joined the webinar. She is the log man consultant that the city's been working with. If she would like to unmute herself and turn her webcam on to perhaps clarify any particular issue, I would welcome that. We are, of course, providing regular public comment. We're accepting snail mail, but given the circumstances that many staff are working remotely, it's not necessarily ideal, or we're concerned about being able to get snail mail to commission members in a timely manner. So we highly recommend that people email the PC secretary, which all of the email information is on the agendas that are posted each week. And now I'm going to hand it over to Leah, our consultant, to maybe she can, she can best describe how this works for the public to call in. So Leah, please go ahead.
Welcome, Ms. Yabara.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Leah, and I work for GoToWebinar, which is the software that we are all using today to hold this meeting. So thank you for having me. The way it works for attendees is, for example, Ellen is the scheduling organizer. She has some information that she distributes. The bare minimum is a registration link. So when an attendee or participant wants to click on it, it leads them to a page to fill out their first name, last name, and email address. After they complete that, they receive a confirmation email that contains a link to join the software site, so they can see, hear, participate, raise their hands, things like that. And then they have an option of also dialing in on the phone. So when they dial in on the phone without joining the software, they can listen in, but they can't participate. If they do both, which means they click on the link and they part, and they connect to audio, then they can full participate, raise the hands, and be unmuted. Ellen, does that help?
Yes, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Unless Chair Schwartz has any other follow-up questions. Oh, Chair Schwartz, you're muted right now. If you could just unmute yourself, please.
Thank you, Ms. Kokinda and Ms. Yabara. Maybe for the public to just know for today, and we can determine going forward which staff member will be on point to facilitate this, who will be handling either phone-in, you know, through smartphone or voice-over IP public comment today? Will that be you, Ms. Kokinda?
Yes, I will be managing the public comment for right now.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Higgins, a question on this topic?
Yep, so can you run that by me again? Members of the public that want to participate have to use a smartphone? They can't just dial in during public comment on a landline or otherwise phone that's not connected to an app?
That's correct. So they could call in to listen in only. So if they just use the phone information, they'd be able to listen, but because there's no software element, we wouldn't be able to determine a way for them to raise their hand to be unmuted. So it does require the software element to actively participate, meaning to communicate with all of you by typing, sorry, by raising your hand and being unmuted.
That's okay. So there is a way for members of the public to participate with a smartphone, with the app, such that we can see on the right panel how many members of the public are at least participating or listening. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And there are, can they, do they have to sign in, or their name is on the screen, or they can, or do we see somebody that's participating that's anonymous, or how does that work?
Great. So after they've registered, that name and email will show up automatically in the attendees' section of the webinar, so that you can both identify them by name and have the capability to unmute them. So just as an example, Commissioner Higgins, you're currently a panelist in the webinar. You can't see the attendees that are currently there. Only Ellen can, because she's the organizer. So she's the one that has the full view of who came into the software element with their names listed, their ability to raise their hands if they wanted to be unmuted to speak, and that right to unmute them or not. She has all the power.
If you could unmute yourself, Commissioner...
So Planning Commissioners are not able to see other participants. Is that correct?
Correct. Unless we revealed the attendee list, which we could do, that's an optional setting, would be to allow everybody to see the attendee list, then you could all see it.
I don't know. I just was trying to draw a connection between real life, where we see people in the audience versus this online platform, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's up to Chair to figure out.
Agreed. And that's an easy fix with, oh, my apologies. Go ahead, Chair.
No, Commissioner Higgins asked some excellent questions. I think it would be, my preference would be, if any other commissioners have opinions, I would like to see, and I'm guessing we all would, who the attend, quote, attendees are, who are participating or desire to participate with us. We have some other commissioners on. Commissioner Bonderson, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair Schwartz. I would absolutely agree with that point of view, that it would be appropriate for us to be able to view the list of attendees or people who are waiting to speak, whether or not they decide to go forward and speak, at least we can see who has joined and is interested. I think that's important for us to be aware of.
Commissioner Wiskom, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I totally agree that that would be helpful for us to be able to see the attendees. Thank you.
Commissioner Lodge.
I concur. Thank you.
Great. Okay, so could we spend a moment? I don't know if we need to address that when the time comes, which is in just a moment, to be able to navigate where on our screen we will see the list of attendees. Maybe, because I'm going to go to public comment next.
Chair Schwartz, may I interrupt for just a moment?
Yes, please, Ms. Kokinda.
So I do want to say that there is, there was some intentionality behind the, whether or not to share attendee lists, and so I think that there's probably, I know that it's a fairly easy function to do that. We have been following the lead of the city clerk's office, and that was based on also discussions with the city administrator. So I guess I just want to make sure that we're consistent with how city council runs, and I think Tava, or Ms. Ostringer, if you wouldn't mind saying something else, or if you want to follow up with that, but I'm going to go ahead and...
Yes, thanks, thanks, Ms. Kokinda. I'm sorry, I've tried to pop up, but my webcam's not working. The members of the public may not wish to, they may wish to be anonymous to anyone but staff. It allows people to attend a meeting just as if you were in the Planning Commission in our chambers. People can attend, but you might not necessarily know their names. Anyone that wishes to speak for public comment will state their name, and Ms. Kokinda will also announce them and let them know that it's their turn to speak. So I was hoping if we could possibly have this conversation offline and discuss, Chair Schwartz, if we wanted to go forward with knowing the attendees, and then stay consistent with city council at this particular meeting, and then we can address it possibly at the next one if the commission clearly desires that.
Thank you for that perspective, Assistant City Attorney Ostringer. Commissioner Higgins?
Yeah, that's a good idea. Let's follow whatever is happening at the city council level and be consistent. I didn't mean to suggest we find out who's watching us on TV. It's no different. So people can watch us on TV during regular proceedings, and they don't have to disclose their presence, so to speak, so.
Yes. Okay, very good. So unless there are any further opinions or comments on that, now I do want to turn to public comment on matters not on our agenda. Staff, do we have anyone waiting to comment to the Planning Commission today?
So I would just invite everyone, if there's any one member of the public who wishes to speak, please raise your hand with the hand icon in your GoToWebinar control panel, and I will call on you. And Chair Schwartz, I don't see anyone who's raised their hand, so if you'd like to continue.
Okay, very good. And I think to be very liberal about this going forward, because it's a new technology that we're using, and we are in virtual mode, I'm going to wait a little bit to see if members of the public in a delayed fashion might want to join. I'm also going to try to be very flexible. If somebody joins a little late, and we need to slightly come back to that, I want to give the public every opportunity to join us and comment. So just, just some advance notice on that.
And Chair Schwartz, and I will, pardon me, Chair Schwartz, I will let you know if I do see someone who has raised their hand when there's a pause in the meeting that you might wish to be notified.
Okay, very good. Now with item three, Roman numeral three, which is on page three of our staff report, being postponed to a date to be determined, that takes us to our administrative agenda, which you'll see on page three. This is the portion of our hearing where we turn to one another, the commissioners for committee and liaison reports. I'm going to skip over staff hearing officer, where I'm the primary liaison, and I want to invite other commissioners who have reports for us. And please, take your time. We have time today, and in that, we had all of our March hearings canceled. I, hopefully, there are some robust reports, because I think the public is anxious to begin seeing and hearing from the Planning Commission again. So at this time, Commissioner Lodge, I think you were first. Please tell us what, please give us some updates.
Sorry, I needed to turn my microphone off. The Stark Landmarks Commission had a hearing on February 19th, which plans, proposed plans for the sort of recreation of the undercrossing on State Street of Highway 101 were presented. The architect that the city has retained is Jeff Shelton, and I sent Mr. a couple of images. Could you put up the one, that's the whole overall sheet? Ms. DeBussk, are you there?
Commissioner Lodge, sorry, we did receive your slides, and Renee Brook had incorporated them into some slides for you to show. Unfortunately, she's having technical difficulties and has not been able to join, so we're going to try, see if we can get you those slides, but that's why they're not on the screen right now.
So Allison, if there's any way, pardon my interruption, Chair, if Renee can forward those to me, or if you have a copy that you could forward to me, I can see what I can do on my computer.
Yes, Ellen, I just emailed it to you.
Okay, let me see what I can do.
Great. So Commissioner Lodge, if you, if there are anything else, we can come back to that, because I think we're all very interested in your slides.
Okay. I'll wait until I'm told they are available.
Okay, so that was your primary update, was on the State Street Undercrossing project?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Wiskom, please.
Sorry, I was muted. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to make a report on the Water Commission meeting from February 20th, and it is a little bit lengthy, but it involves our rate development policy, so I thought it might be fairly interesting for people to know. So the commission heard a report on water rate development policy. They hired a firm called HDR Engineering to conduct a comprehensive water rate study and perform a cost of service analysis for water rates in four categories. And the four categories are residential, multifamily, commercial, and irrigation. The commission heard summaries of major planning and policy inputs for the rate models, and I'm simply going to highlight a few of them here. There's a rate study planning period. The consultant will develop a 10-year financial plan to gauge revenues versus expenses over the period. The rate model will focus on the three-year adoption period. And as you can imagine, you know, water rates, when we're asked to conserve, revenues go down when we're doing our job conserving water. So, so it's a real balancing act. Number two is operating and capital costs, and it was interesting to note that the implementation of community choice energy will raise electricity costs by 10% to 12%, which is about $1.5 million over three years. In addition, new paving standards for capital projects are raising water main replacement costs by about 7% or $600,000 annually. Therefore, revenue requirements will be higher than we had anticipated. And for revenue requirements, the first step here is to sufficiently fund the cost of operations, including maintenance, maintenance standards, and other obligations. The preliminary analysis finds that revenue increases of 5% to 7% for the first three physically fiscal years are required to meet these obligations. And then they talked about the water supply outlook. The city's water supply is supported by a diverse portfolio that improves reliability, but may also produce volatility, as I talked about before, as switches are made from one source to another during drought years. An HDR study recommends calculating rates based on supply from all of the city's sources to reduce volatility in year-to-year changes. And this is consistent with what's going on with the existing model. And then the last thing was volumetric pricing and revenue stability. So waters were held flat in the study and believe that the 70/30 split that the city currently uses of volumetric and fixed charges is satisfactory. It gives the customer the choice of water conservation to reduce their bills, while providing the city with sufficient stream of revenues to support operating and capital costs. And then the... then the commission also received, since this was my first Water Commission meeting, it was quite interesting. The commission also received a presentation from COME, which is the Contourations and Maintenance Board of their 2019 activities and accomplishments. And since the fires have impacted water quality in the COME area, many projects took place during 2019. And it was a pretty impressive slideshow of what they've done. Drought resiliency project to weight the pipe at the bottom of the lake instead of removing it after the drought. This is the pipe that pumps the water when Lake Atuma becomes too low to use gravity feed. And they also presented numerous slides on projects showing removal of barriers to fish passage and riparian habitat improvements. These included constructing fish ladders, removing low-flow crossings, cattle exclusion fencing projects where cattle were actually eating the riparian vegetation, bridge projects, and gravel augmentation projects for fish to lay eggs. So my conclusion was that they had a tremendous amount of success with a limited amount of financial resources in the last year. They accomplished a lot of projects. And that concludes my reports. Thank you.
It appears that Chair Schwartz is offline. I see her microphone on. I think that this is a, I'm not sure, I don't see her camera. Chair Schwartz, can you try to say something to test? I'm going to ask if Leah Yubara can come back on and help me troubleshoot.
Absolutely. What's the issue?
So Chair Schwartz says that she's offline, but her.
Hold on.
Chair Schwartz is online and connected?
She says offline, it says offline in my organizer panel, but her green microphone is on.
Your cock, your internet went off.
And Chair Wiskom is also unmuted at the moment.
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead.
I'll let Ellen know.
Sorry, I'm going to mute you.
It looks like she's, she was just about to give us an update on what was going on there.
Yes. So Chair Wiskom, when you, let's see.
Go ahead and unmute Chair Wiskom. Thank you.
Yes, excuse me, Ellen, Ms. Kokenda, it's Vice Chair Wiskom. I just got a call from Chair Schwartz, and she's rebooting her internet. Her internet went down for a minute. So she said it might take her a minute and then she'll be back online.
Okay. I can suggest, Allison, if you want to, Mr. Busk, if you wouldn't mind coming on, I can suggest we do a five or 10-minute recess, if that, what your preference is.
Agreed. Let's take a five-minute break.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. So to members of the public, we're going to be taking a five-minute recess while we address some technical difficulties. Thank you so much. Great. Hi, everyone. Unfortunately, Chair Schwartz, her internet is down and is not able to log back in at the moment. I'm going to hand it off to Vice Chair Wiskom to go ahead and finish chairing the meeting. I do want to let you know, Chair Wiskom, that we were able to pull up Commissioner Lodge's PowerPoint slide if we want to go back to that issue before finishing up the agenda. So thank you, everyone. This is really unfortunate. I'm sorry for Chair Schwartz, but it does, I know that a lot of people across the city have struggled with internet connections in the last couple of days, and the rain doesn't help. So thanks, everyone in the audience for being patient. And Chair, Vice Chair Wiskom, I'm going to turn it over to you and ask Timmy Bolton staff to bring up Mrs. Commissioner Lodge's PowerPoint slide.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Kokenda. I appreciate it. Commissioner Higgins, did you have a question? You had your hand up.
Perhaps Commissioner Schwartz could call in and be on audio only, if that's an option.
So if I may, but Chair, I think the consultant with Log Me In is in contact with Chair Schwartz of what her options are. I'm not quite sure if she's been able to reach her, but we have her calling to see. So I'm pretty sure they're in touch, but I think they might be troubleshooting in the meantime. So yes, that is an option if Chair Schwartz would like to participate that way.
Yes. Thank you. This is Leah with Log Me In. The, Ellen, I don't have her phone number yet. That hasn't been put in chat, but I'm happy to reach out to her as soon as I get that. Next is, yes, because she's staff, she can go ahead and just call in and she should be able to just speak. We won't see her listed in the staff section, but she should be able to speak freely because she was invited as staff.
Just one interruption. So Leah, if you check your chat, I sent it a little while ago.
Okay. Unfortunately, I don't have it.
Okay, I'm going to resend it to you. And, okay, I think you should have it. Thank you for.
I see it, and I will go ahead and reach out to her, and I'll get her on the line in just a moment. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Should we wait for her to come on the line? Commissioner Lodge, why don't you put on your webcam and come on aboard here and let's talk about these, these, oh, now, excuse me, one sec. She's calling. Hi.
I'm getting back into the webinar now.
We have a new development, and Chair Schwartz just called and said she is coming back into the webinar right now. And actually, I see her name up there as an attendee. So Chair Schwartz, if you turn on your mic and your webcam, and I'll disappear from view here.
Okay, I'm looking to do that now. Hold on one second here. My webcam should be on. Let me see what's going on here.
So it looks like you just turned it on. It looks like it might take a moment. There we are.
My profuse apologies. All of a sudden, my computer completely shut down, and I had to get a new keyboard and plug it in. So I apologize.
Sorry about that. In good news, we have Commissioner Lodge's slide that she was just about ready to start explaining. So we really haven't moved any further.
Oh, excellent. Okay, thank you. Thank you for everyone's patience.
Shall I go ahead and talk about it?
Please, Commissioner Lodge. Thank you.
Okay. On the left is the sheet, the overall sheet showing the undercrossing with, on the top line is, one of the columns has been covered with tile and a design that would be continued all the way down through the undercrossing. And on the right are the various designs proposed, that of course would be much further apart in actuality. And I was very impressed with this. I think Jeff Shelton, the architect, talked about how it was a place that people walked through quickly to get through and was not always an inviting place. I think that this is going to really make it, which the HLC, Historic Landmarks Commission members thought also, that this will really possibly make this undercrossing an attraction. People will come to look at it. And so that is being worked on, and I think that's going to be, make that really something, undercrossing, something very distinctive and quite beautiful. The inspiration came to the architect from buildings in Europe, one in particular in Lisbon, Portugal, and others in cloisters or monasteries, where each column around it is decorated in different designs. Each one has its distinct design in mosaic. So I think I wanted you to know about this. And I think I'm personally looking forward to it, and I think it will be a great addition. I have one other item that I want to bring up, if I may, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Lodge, may I ask you, maybe you already mentioned this. Do we have a general timeline for this project or desired timeline?
It was, the item was continued for him to come back with, for the architect to come back with further development of the design, so.
Great, great. Thank you.
I don't know when that will be happening. The other item I wanted to bring up is that, there we're going to go. I read The Guardian, which is a British newspaper online, and they had an article about Europe and England with a huge decline in the ability for Airbnb participators to rent their units. And has, they included in the article, story, this is why I'm bringing it up, on Twitter, which says, "64% rise in rental properties across Dublin in midst of COVID-19 crisis, according to property website, as landlords start withdrawing their rentals from short-term listing sites like Airbnb and are offering them into the market instead." I bring this up because frankly, this would be great if it happened in Santa Barbara. That's been part of the housing crisis, where perfectly good dwelling units are used for short-term vacation rentals. So I thought that would be of interest to the point.
Thank you for sharing that, Commissioner Lodge. Was there anything else at HLC that's noteworthy?
Not at this time. I did check with Kathy Janegon Dykes, Visit Santa Barbara, to see if she had heard of anything of this sort happening in Santa Barbara. But she has not, but she says it makes sense. People are not traveling and are observing shelter-in-place mandates.
And was that, was that a virtual meeting? Have they started? I know the ABR has. Has HLC also started virtual meetings?
This was in February.
Oh, that's right. You mentioned February 19th. I didn't know if there had been any subsequent ones. Okay, so they have not started their virtual meetings yet.
If they have, I haven't watched them.
Yeah, so I'm sure that will be forthcoming. Very good. And thank you, Commissioner Lodge. Anything else before we turn to Commissioner Higgins?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those visuals. It's very exciting to have one of our most creative architects on the community involved with that project. Commissioner Higgins?
Madam Chair, the De La Guerra Plaza Advisory Committee hasn't met in a while. Commissioner Wiskom can correct me if I'm wrong, but not since January. We were to have a meeting last week that was postponed to May 8, I believe. And it's uncertain as to whether or not that committee will take advantage of online platforms or try to meet in person. So do I have that right, Commissioner Wiskom?
Yes, indeed you do. It's a moving target that.
Yeah. I don't have any other committee reports, but I do have a question about our lunch meeting procedures and other advisory committee reassignments. If, when you're ready, I can ask that, or I can ask.
Let's, yeah, would you hold that? Because I wanted to touch on that topic also, but please do remember to come back in. Let's definitely address that. Thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Higgins. Let me just go to, I don't know if Commissioner Wiskom wanted to say anything else about the De La Guerra Plaza item, only because there haven't been meetings for a while, and it sounds like it's to be determined if we're going to go virtual. Is that right, Commissioner Wiskom?
Sorry, I had, I had an email notification come in over my microphone. Couldn't get to it. Yes, I reported on the last De La Guerra Plaza meeting, and that was the first one that Commissioner Higgins attended with me. And that's the one where we actually talked about parking. So there has not been a meeting since that meeting, and I think Commissioner Higgins is right. It was back in January that that was determined. And that's, that's all I know. It's been, it's been a bit of a moving target for, for these meetings. And now with COVID-19, I think it's, it's going to be a challenge to get together. But my, my suspicion is that the designers are continuing their work. They've got, they've got a lot of work to do based on what was decided at the January meeting for parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, this goes to a point I wanted to make about our work as, as the planning commission. And as the public knows, all of our March hearings were canceled. And I've been in close communication with staff about how to support staff continuing to move important policy and project items forward. Because even though it may feel at times during this COVID-19 pandemic that we are slowed, that we are, we certainly are physically isolated, that doesn't mean that we don't have the, both the opportunity and the responsibility of continuing to advance very important community issues, including policies and projects. So I'll get to that a little later. Commissioner Bonderson, before I go to you, and again, while I was knocked off my technology, I was wondering, Commissioner Wiskom, if you had completed your Water Commission updates and any other updates. I don't want to ask you to be repetitive if you've already covered that while, while I was offline.
Yes, I completed my rather lengthy Water Commission update.
Oh, dear. Oh, gee.
That was my first, I'm happy to send you my notes if you'd like them.
All right.
I'll email them to you.
All right, very good. Thank you so much. All right. Commissioner Bonderson?
Yes, thank you, Chair Schwartz. I appreciate the opportunity to share my notes with you as well. As you all know, due to social distancing and the stay-at-home mandate, so many of the committees have been on hold. But in contrary, ABR has barely missed a beat. They obviously canceled a few meetings in March as well, but in actuality, they only missed one single full board meeting and have managed to stay on track, on task, and on schedule, which is absolutely worth commending. There are three particular projects that I'd like to bring to your attention today. And I will start with a meeting, a project that was reviewed on March 9. It is located at 533 East Mitchell-Treina Street. And the project proposal was for a new condominium development using the average unit size density program. It consists of constructing a new seven-unit, four-story condominium in the location of an existing surface-level parking lot. And the site is adjacent to an existing three-story mixed-use structure that contains two residential units. A formal application on this project has yet to be submitted, and the project is still in conceptual design and remains in the conceptual stage. There was a number of zoning issues that were identified with the project, and the project will also require several modification requests, which will require planning commission review when it is ready and will be provided to our attention at that time. The project will also require compliance with project compatibility analysis and several guidelines. So in the meantime, the project has been continued indefinitely. But in general, ABR seemed to be quite satisfied with the mass, bulk, and scale of the project. They considered it mostly acceptable, given the context of the buildings adjacent to the proposed structure and the vacant lot that's located to the north of the project. Open yard, an open yard modification was requested, which could be reasonable, given their technicality and the fact that they are providing additional private yard and common yard space on the property. There were other site comments, general site comments provided, but that's, that's, I, that's all I wanted to share about that project, since it is going to be coming to us. that's all I wanted to share about that project, since it is going to be coming to us at a further time. There's a second project I'd like to share with you. It was on the same date. It was reviewed also on March 9th by ABR, and it's located at 1723 Garden Street. This project proposal was to permit a variety of unpermitted conditions on a multi-use residence. The project consisted, or consists, of reducing the number of units from 11 to 9 and other several, several other smaller upgrades, which will bring the unpermitted items around the site into compliance.
Commissioner Bonderson, what was the address for this one?
It's 1723 Garden Street.
Oh, that's the one. We did a site visit and we conducted that hearing on that. That sounded very familiar. Thank you.
Yes, and basically, just to wrap that one up, the project requires a waiver from ABR for alternative open yard design and also requires compliance with the Project Compatibility Analysis and Urban Design Guidelines. But the motion was granted as submitted to provide, to approve the project design and final approval. So that project's moved on, moved forward. The third and final one I wanted to share with you all today was just, was just reviewed on April 6th. As I mentioned, ABR is back in action, hasn't missed a beat. And this project is located at 16 West Mission Street. It was a proposal for the conversion of an existing commercial complex into a residential complex using the Average Unit Size Density Program and the State Bonus Density Law. This project entails an interior conversion of the existing floor area to include a unit mix of nine studios, 11 one-bedrooms, and three two-bedroom units ranging in size. The lot has a general plan land use designation of a medium-high-density residential, which will, which allows for 15 to 27 dwelling units per acre and using the state's bonus density law, which allows for up to 11% more units above base density. So this project is, its proposed density is 35 dwelling units per acre. So that was interesting to note. As a part of the state density bonus law, the proposed conversion includes two units designated for very low-income level tenants. So final approval was received on this project, and the 10-day appeal period was announced. That was all done this Monday. That includes my ABR review, but I do have another committee I'd like to share committee notes with you, if there aren't any questions on the ABR.
No, thank you. But that's very encouraging that ABR is continuing to move forward. And I did receive an invitation from staff to listen in to their dry run for their virtual meeting. And when was that, last week? And was encouraged to see how comfortable, I think, those ABR members are going to be using it because they are a critical design body for us in moving some of these, whether it's mixed-use, commercial, residential forward. So especially on the residential side. Yes, so, and I know you have another update for us, please.
Yes, I, I just wanted to add to your comment because watching them do their review on Monday kind of gave me hope and inspired me that we can all do this because they did it quite well, and they did it very smoothly with very few glitches and were able to view their materials and speak with their agents and presenters. So it was really, it was really beautifully done there, there on the front, front end of this. Thank you. The, the second committee that I wanted to share with you actually took place shortly after our last meeting, so it's been a few weeks. But the Transportation and Circulation Committee had a public meeting that was held on Thursday, February 27th. And it was considered a very important and informative meeting. City staff, both Rob Dayton and Jessica Grant, presented three of the four proposed projects that are being funded by the Active Transportation Grant. I would recommend that anyone who may be interested in these major upcoming projects and how the grant funding is being proposed, to spend some time reviewing the staff reports and watching the meeting video. There were three, the three proposed projects that were presented at this meeting include the Lacombra Junior High, Modoc Cycle Track, and Multi-Use Path, the Milbus Street Quarter Planning Effort, and the Active Transportation Program Grant Application for Upper Delavina, Delavina Street. So for anyone who isn't aware that there are big projects being proposed and designed and moving forward in our community, really should catch up by reading and watching the videos. The meeting was approximately three hours, which I understand is, is unique and considered a long meeting for this committee, but it was certainly very informative and quite exciting. So these proposals affect a very large, large area of Santa Barbara. And as such, I believe we should all be generally aware of the proposed changes and see how they will affect the neighborhoods and the people involved with using those areas on a regular basis. That includes everyone. So catch up and take a moment to review those, the video, if you're interested in more information.
Excellent. Well, that's exciting that that project is moving forward also. That's.
Great projects.
Yes, great projects. Thank you so, thank you very much. Anyone else with liaison or any other updates from your various activities? Commissioner Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few updates. I'm going to start with Planning Commissioner Academy that I attended at the beginning of March, put on by the California League of Cities. I'd like to thank Mr. Busk for providing that opportunity. And during the few days that I was there, the California League of Cities went over some important topics and information that I think would be useful for the public and the commission. First of which, it looks like, and of course, this is the pre-COVID-19 reality, and so this may be a little bit different now, but it looks like it was going to be a busy year for housing policy. Over 100 bills related to housing were introduced, of which they identified about a dozen that were realistic. And a few of them related to ADUs, which it seems like every year there's a change to the ADU policy. So that's something that we can look forward to. Of course, it might change now, given our new reality, but just wanted to put that on everyone's radar. And then the next is regarding our regional housing needs allocation. And some of the cities that were in attendance had already received their sixth-cycle regional housing needs allocation. And of course, they are much larger than our city, but I just thought it would be useful if I went over some of their fifth-cycle allocations versus their sixth-cycle. The first being Los Angeles, which in the fifth cycle had regional allocation of $85,000, and their sixth cycle is $463,000. So a drastic increase.
Can you just repeat those numbers again because, and let it sink in?
Yeah.
In turn, order of magnitude of upward pressure there?
Absolutely. So for Los Angeles, the fifth cycle, which is the previous cycle, their regional housing needs allocation was $85,000. For this sixth cycle, their allocation is $463,000. So a drastic, drastic increase. And, and that's kind of the theme with the other cities as well. I mean, Long Beach for fifth cycle was $7,000, and their sixth cycle was $26,000. Riverside, $8,000 for fifth cycle, $18,000 for sixth cycle. So I think we can expect a sharp increase in our allocation as well for the sixth cycle. And one of the comments that I had heard during our conversation was the state might make it a little bit more difficult for us to use the same locations that we used and identified for possible housing development in the fifth cycle for the sixth cycle, if there has been no progress. And so for us, as we prepare to receive our sixth cycle, I think it's important for us to take that into consideration.
Commissioner Escobedo, were any cities that are comparable to our size, let's just say 100,000 or so, considered job-rich, et cetera? Were, were they mentioned to give us a sense of maybe some comparisons on population and job center, job-rich centers?
Great question, Chair Schwartz. They weren't, and the, we had a city, one city that was smaller than ours, that was the city of Seal Beach, and they went from two for their allocation in the fifth cycle to 1,200. But their population is about 25,000, so.
Okay.
Nothing around our population.
Okay. And what I'm hoping, if staff could make a note of this, but I will follow up with Dan Gullett also, is that as our Santa Barbara County Association of Government continues to take up our county's arena allocation discussion and ultimately allocation, and I think that's later this fall, but again, we'll have staff come back and give us an update. We really want to monitor that closely as we're also working on policy amendments. So maybe Mr. Busk, if you could simply make a note of that, and we'll follow up. Excellent. You know, I was also thinking about your Planning Commissioner Academy experience and whether it's a virtual lunch or it's, you know, a main hearing item. We would ask you, I think, to provide us in a lunch meeting, a regular lunch meeting, to give us some more highlights. But perhaps if we have openings in our Thursday 1:00 PM agenda, we could ask you to bring forward some other substantive information that you, from takeaways that you have.
I would love to do that.
Okay. So why don't we work with Mr. Busk on terms of our agenda going forward to make sure we really utilize these Thursday 1:00 o'clock agenda to sort of bridge the typical lunch meetings we would have and the items from there, where we're going to have to incorporate them into our 1:00 hearings. We have quite a number of items, which we won't discuss today, but that are on our tentative agenda, were on our tentative agenda to be incorporated as lunch items, and we're now going to need to creatively look to figure out how to incorporate those into regular 1:00 hearings. So great, hold on to that material. I'm so thankful that you were able to attend the academy before the pandemic really took full force. So were there any other updates you wanted to give us before I turn to Commissioner Higgins?
Yeah, I did have a couple more. I attended the downtown parking meeting on March 12th, in which they went over the 2020 census update and the capital improvement program update. I imagine that they're likely going to have to revisit that, given the current circumstances, with closing the downtown parking lots and refunding the monthly parking fees. But it was encouraging to see just how creative they've been in the past, and I trust in their ability to navigate this very difficult time.
So let's do this, Commissioner Escobedo, on the very important 2020 census. Let's, let's alert the community, if they've not already seen in their mailboxes, what the envelope will look like that they want to take from the mailbox, open it, go online. It's a very simple census survey. But I'm going to hold up my envelope. Let me go with this. This is what it looks like when it comes in the mail, and it's very important. And I don't know if you want to give highlights. I think some don't realize the importance to every municipality in filling out the census in terms of the funding that comes primarily from the federal government, but also some states. For example, Commissioner Escobedo, I was just doing some quick research this morning on this, and I noticed that 10% of the budget for the California Department of Education, 10% comes from federal allocation due to census. So this is how important it is, and of course, there are many other allocations. So back to you, but I wanted to use this opportunity with your update to strongly encourage the whole community to participate in our 2020 census. And that means everybody, and I'm not sure if our commissioners listen to the webinar, but it's not just adults, it's not just citizens. Actually, everybody in a household, literally, whether you're a minor or you're an adult, can fill out the online census form, and we want them to. So back to you, Commissioner Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And it is very important, and it is how we, we get a lot of our funding. And it's important for the community to know that there is also not a citizenship question on the census. So please do turn in your census information, and it only takes a couple of minutes. The last update that I have is from the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting on February 26th, in which they talked about a few different things, but the big, exciting thing, and of course, in our new reality, it may get pushed back a little bit, but it looks like Cabrillo Pavilion is scheduled to open in the next month or two. And this is a project that they've been working on for 10 years, too. So it's very exciting. This is going to be a hub for a lot of programming. There is going to be day-use locker rooms with showers. There's going to be a gym, and they're going to have programming there. They're going to have classes as well as drop-in time. And I'm really excited to check, take a look at this when it opens. And again, it might get pushed back. It was scheduled to open in somewhere in April, but given our new reality, we'll wait and see.
Well, that's, that really is exciting. Sounds like it was, the progress was accelerating from the last update I heard. So thank you very much for that. Thank you, Commissioner Escobedo. And Commissioner Higgins, would you like to come back on, please?
So, Commissioner Schwartz, how would you like to handle if at all reassignments of committee and liaison representation with the commissioner? Is that another lunch meeting at some point? And then generally on other lunch meetings? I kind of look forward to those, so we can dive into some subject matter. And I know you have a lot scheduled for those. Will that be part of the online platform that we can look forward to?
Yes, thank you so much for asking. I've been in discussion with staff a bit about that, Commissioner Higgins. First, to the question of rebalancing our liaison assignments, with especially with Commissioner Reed coming on new, and we need to fold him into, and then, as I mentioned, rebalance. I know that he is looking at the full roster of liaison opportunities, probably connecting with a couple of individual commissioners to see if there are reassignment opportunities. But we are going to need to incorporate, well, we will incorporate the rebalancing of our liaison assignments into our next hearing, and that will be next Thursday, the 16th. If Mr. Busk would just reconfirm that for me, could you come back online, Mr. Busk, so that I'm giving an accurate sense of how we're, how and when we're going to handle that matter?
Yes, Chair Schwartz, we have scheduled liaison appointments for your hearing next Thursday, April 16th, on the administrative agenda part of your meeting.
And then while we have you, Mr. Busk, is there any look ahead you could give us to confirm how we might also still handle and incorporate some of the trainings that we were going to conduct during our 12 to 1:00 lunch meetings?
That's something that we still need to discuss because we need to make sure that the meetings are open to the public. So it would need to be in a similar format. So I will be checking in with the city attorney in terms of which are appropriate, perhaps as formal trainings at the 1:00 meeting, and which can perhaps just be delayed until we're back to our more standard format.
Okay. And I'll work with you, Mr. Busk. There are some items, you can probably have a sense of which ones I might be most keenly interested in moving forward, especially with three of seven new commissioners. We really want to bring everyone up to speed in skill and comfort level with some of the basic, not only the parliamentarian aspects, but the mechanics of how we do our jobs, especially where we're making motions, identifying, making findings, and so forth. That's a very important part of how to do our jobs properly. So we'll talk about that, I think, in due time. Now, back to Commissioner. So we'll talk about that, I think, in due time. Now, back to Commissioner Higgins' question. I don't know if there was anything else there in your question, Commissioner Higgins, that you wanted to pursue regarding lunch meeting items. But for now, that's where we are with staff on, and I think it'll be on an agenda-by-agenda basis, that we'll have to look at, and how to incorporate those, because they are full-public, you know, televised, recorded hearings. Did you have some further thoughts, maybe that are important to share, or, you know, questions, concerns, anything at all? We don't have your audio on right now.
All right. I don't see why we couldn't just keep this format intact, and it seems to be working fine, so not much to change, unless I'm missing something, and look forward to getting those lunch meeting zone again as soon as possible.
And do you, when you say the lunch meetings, Commissioner Higgins, do you mean incorporating the lunch meeting items into our 1 o'clock hearing, since we won't actually be having in-person lunch meetings for some time?
I assume those would start at noon?
Well, we, staff and I need to continue to discuss that. At this point, Mr. Busk, unless I misunderstood any of our communications, I was assuming that staff's intention and recommendation is to not have a 12 to 1 o'clock, but simply fold in to our 1 o'clock hearings the training items that we can and should move forward. Mr. Busk, back to you for whether or not I'm understanding staff's perspectives on that?
Yes, Chair Schwartz, you are understanding it correctly, but we will be looking at it on a case-by-case basis. I don't know when the next lunch meeting would actually be, so it's something we can talk about and see if this format would even work for lunch meetings. It is a little bit more difficult, because we don't televise the lunch meeting, so there would be different things to take into consideration.
Okay.
Chair Schwartz, I apologize for interrupting, but this is Assistant City Attorney Tava Ostringer. I just wanted to let you know that I'm working with Ms. Debusk, and then, of course, we'll be working with you on how we can agendize these and meet the Brown Act requirements, and also address your lunch meeting needs, and make sure that you get the training that you need, and see how we can possibly facilitate a more informal, but also publicized, meeting, so you can have those lunch meeting trainings.
Okay, thank you. Perhaps, Ms. Ostringer, you and Mr. Busk and I could have a separate conference call to begin discussing this, because just as a point of reference, we were going to have a lunch meeting, in-person lunch meeting, next Thursday. So that's how soon our lunch meetings were to resume, if we were to be in person. So I think we need to get right on this. And Commissioner Higgins, did you have something, a further thought you wanted to share? Your audio. You can keep your audio on, Mr. Higgins, that's all right.
Sorry, I won't get in the way of anything, you know, that staff has to iron out with technology. But just to note, this is, notwithstanding the technology break, we're in an hour and 15 minutes on an item where we only had resolutions, you know, to approve, and the technology is slower, you know, to get used to. And, you know, I would want us to actually have a couple of actual items to deliberate and vote on with the lunch meeting. It would shoot us into the dinner hour, for sure. So, just for the record.
That's a good point. So let's make a note of that, Mr. Busk, and see how we balance all of this. Now, to date, Commissioner Higgins, and again, I apologize that I got bumped offline. This may happen periodically to one or more of us, but I was certainly allowing for, as you could tell, very flexible and liberal updates, that is, the amount of time allocated to the liaison reports, in part to continue to help us become comfortable with the technology, but also because our very significant policy item, and that was the Stormwater Management Program amendments that we were to undertake, was postponed. So we had room in our schedule today to do that. But certainly, when we have a very full agenda on a Thursday, virtual or otherwise, need to be a little more efficient in moving through the items, as we have been in the past. So again, I'll follow up with Ms. Ostringer and Mr. Busk, to begin discussing how we continue to, or how we will handle what would be our lunch meeting items. Any other commissioner liaison updates? Okay, very good. I wanted to mention, when I look at our liaison roster at present, there are several items that, where I'm involved, and I just wanted to quickly give you a sense of where those are without providing details at this time. So going right through our list. Still working with my co-primary partner, Commissioner Higgins, on the Highway 101 Improvement Design Subcommittee. We have not met, but I think in due time, especially the, what we'll call the Parallel Project, which is the Coast Village Olive Mill Roundabout Project, will continue to move forward, and I'll be in touch with staff about that. Commissioner Wiskom and I are co-primary liaison on the Sea Level Rise Adaptation Plan Subcommittee, and that work, that had been delayed, as you may all know, in going to council for an informational meeting. So as soon as that is reagendized, and ultimately will come to Planning Commission, we'll hear that. And then on the Residential Multi-Unit Objective Design Standards, that working group, just to bring us back as a recap for especially the new commissioners, and then as a look forward. Last year, Commissioners Campenella and I were the two liaison from Planning Commission to that working group. It was a non-Brown Act working group. We concluded our work the end of the year, and I'm in communication with Rosie Deisty about when the objective design standards will now be reagendized for review at HLC and ABR before coming to Planning Commission. Those are going to be new. That'll be a new policy and a new ordinance. So that will be significant policy work for our commission to take up, very important. Won't go into it now, since we haven't been agendized, to talk about it in any detail. Before I leave, Commissioner Wiskom, did you want to mention anything about sea level rise?
Yes, thank you, Chair Schwartz. I just wanted to add to what you said. The presentation at City Council, I, my understanding is that that is the rollout of the public part of the process. And since we cannot, at this point, have workshops and public meetings, I would assume that that's going to get delayed, and that the Coastal Commission would be okay with it getting delayed until such time as we can actually have a proper public process with public meetings on it. Thank you.
Yes. And as you know, Commissioner Wiskom, we're just awaiting reply from Melissa Hetrick about the timing and the details of all of that. Let's see, and I think that's it from the liaison. I wanted to mention, for the public in particular, to please follow our Planning Commission agenda closely. Staff has reconfirmed that by 5 o'clock tonight, the full agenda for our hearing next Thursday, the 16th, will be posted. So you can take a look at everything that we'll be taking up there. We have a tentative pending list of many other important projects and policy work. So I want the public to know, and my fellow commissioners to know, that we are moving forward, and it is my strong objective to work with staff and encourage and support staff in any way, in all ways possible, to continue moving these very important policies and projects forward. Simply because we're in a virtual mode does not relieve us of our responsibilities as land use decision-makers for the city, as public officials. And I think now is the time, even more so, than when we can return to meeting in person, where the public is asking to be connected, is yearning to be connected, and to know that we are still doing the public's work. Speaking of that, I just wanted to mention, it is a bit of a look back, but it was a wonderful experience, and some of the commissioners were there on February 14th. The Housing Authority City of Santa Barbara had a grand opening ceremony of the Johnson Court project over on the east side. I'm just going to read a few details, and I don't know if any of the other commissioners who were there, I'm doing this from memory. Commissioner Escobedo was there, I don't know if I saw Commissioner Lodge. Anyway, if you would put on your webcams, it was wonderfully attended by the community at large. And let me just go over a few stats, because this is the first 100% low-income, affordable housing project for veterans. The property owned by a veteran and his family, and now deeded to the Housing Authority to provide much-needed housing for formerly homeless veterans. These are 16 studio units. The average square foot of each is 320. There is one two-bedroom manager unit with amenities, beautiful amenities, a courtyard, a community room, bicycle spaces. The architecture firm of RRM Design, we know Dede Pikerd well, did a beautiful job, very simple, but beautiful. And so with that, I don't want to say too much more, other than I'd like Commissioner Escobedo and Wiskom to also comment about their experience attending that grand opening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Go ahead, Mr.
I will just echo your comments, Chair Schwartz. It was a very moving ceremony and grand opening, probably the most moving I've been to. And it was so incredibly well-attended. It was just a group of happy people. So that's all I'll say. Commissioner Escobedo?
I'll echo those same thoughts. It was beautiful to see the whole Johnson family there, and to hear about the legacy, and to see the actual units, they are beautiful units. And I am excited for all of those that get to stay there. It was beautiful.
I think we're going to hear more from the Housing Authority about how they can continue to assemble these very complex and important partnerships. I'm looking at the back. Well, first of all, let me just show everyone. So this was handed out, let me see if I can do this, I'm not accustomed to. I'll hold this up. Johnson Court, and there is Vernon Johnson, the former veteran property owner. And on the back is, look at this long list. These are the partnerships that were needed to make this opportunity and this project viable. And it's public and private, and I think we're going to be talking more about that at the Planning Commission, and hearing more from the Housing Authority in that regard. We even had, Commissioner Wiskom and Escobedo, as you'll recall, which I think stirred everyone, and I don't think you could hear a pin drop, the Vandenberg Air Force Color Guard. They did, I don't know what you call that, and then there was singing of the Star Spangled Banner. It was remarkable. I don't recall this ever taking place in this fashion in the city of Santa Barbara for 100%, you know, residential project ribbon-cutting. So with that, of course, we had dignitaries there making remarks, our Congressman Salute Carver Hall was there and more. Any other comments from the other commissioners about that in particular? No. Well, we're going to continue to make sure that all the commissioners receive these ribbon-cutting announcements, because they're very important for us to see our work, the fruition of our work. And I say "our," I mean our collective work. And then I want to conclude, unless staff has anything else to add, I want to say something about the times in which we find ourselves. Those of you who know me well know I probably was going to do this. As we are sheltering in place primarily, it's easy, I think, for us to feel alone and isolated, you know, not connected in the ways we're accustomed to, and that we're yearning to be connected, and we need to, as a civil society, as a healthy society. So I think we need to find new ways of continuing to be hopeful, and to be optimistic, and to be productive. And I've been watching, as maybe you have, I think almost every press conference, Governor Newsom, along with, of course, New York Governor Andrew Cuomo, but to our governor, there are some quotes I want to read to you in closing from our governor that just really struck me. There are so many. But he mentioned that we're living in uncertain times, and that does not mean that we live in fear, or we live in retreat, or we shrink from collective responsibility. And I think we take that very seriously as the Planning Commission, and as public servants, and serving the public. So I want us to keep that in mind. He also mentioned that it's our responsibility to do even more than we imagined. So in a time when it might be our inclination to pull back, you know, to pull in, to not call upon ourselves, to be our best selves, our most creative, our most thoughtful, forward-looking, I think we have to double down and do that even more. And then lastly, he said, "We're in a time when we need to go boldly, and we need to meet this moment without playing small ball," that's what he called it, "and we need to coordinate and organize as only we in California can." And that continues to inspire me. And I think we just need to lean on each other, look to each other, inspire each other. And so, without further ado, unless staff has anything else, I'm happy to conclude our April 9th Planning Commission hearing. Thanks again to everybody for your participation and your patience. I am going to, at this moment, sign off on my webcam. I would like the other six commissioners to please come back on, so we can see each other, and for the public to see us as well, before we turn off our connectivity. Let me just turn mine off here. I'm leaving my microphone on, but I want everybody to see one another, for staff to see us, for the public to see us. Who do we have missing? Commissioner Higgins, are you still with us? Maybe he signed off already. Oh, there you are, excellent. Okay, so I don't need to be the one with the last word. Does anyone else have any parting words of inspiration, or just thoughts as we continue to move ahead together?
I would just like to say, be safe out there, be healthy, and stay happy. Keep smiling. That's, I think, the way we're going to get through this together. And I'd like to thank again Chair Schwartz for her leadership and her thoughtfulness, and also for her organizational skills. This is very different times for us, and I think with her leadership, things have been going very smoothly. So be safe, all of you. Nice to see all of your faces. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wiskom. Would anybody else like to make any closing remarks of any type, or inspirational thoughts for us, as we continue on this challenging, but challenging journey, but one filled with much opportunity?
Well, I hope to see you all very soon.
Yes, yes, I second that. Very good. Staff, did any, maybe we'll just have whoever wants to sign off, and either Ms. Debusk, Ms. Kokinda, Ms. Ostringer, do any staff members need to provide any concluding remarks or direction as we close out today? Ms. Kokinda, you're back with us.
I will, I'm just going to say thank you, and congratulations on completing your first official meeting, and you did a phenomenal job. I'm sorry about the difficulties, but when you're ready, I can go ahead and officially close the webinar. But thank you so much.
Okay, very good. I think then our meeting for April 9th is adjourned.
Thank you.